Respecting you folks' time, okay? I'm sorry, Rev.
Hold on, I asked a little bit about naming already. We thought said thank you for the City of Prairie View. Thank you for the City Council, all official officers. Thank you for the members of this community. Thank you for the county, state, United States. We ask your blessings on this evening tonight. Amen.
Amen. And just for the record, I do want to say that our council women, Wendy Williams and Paulette Matthews Barnett did inform me that they wouldn't be here this evening because of prior commitments. So, I do want to say that, just to think. None of them showed up. Two of them did at least let us know what was going on. Okay, so, let me put something in your hands, because I feel if we're having a conversation, you should have a reasonable idea of what we're talking about, and that would help.
Do you have to take one and pass it down that way?
No.
And I think what all of you have is a double-sided sheet. And I do want to make it clear kind of why we're doing this, a couple of reasons. But one is, if something's going on in the city, I just think it's residential right now. Okay? So, we have this, and it's going to be some nice work and impacting the city. So, while they're doing the final work on that, we're going to go over what it is. So, you got that coming? How you doing? Good. Okay. So, what you're looking at is from the Texas Department of Agriculture, something that we worked on about a year and a half ago with an outfit called Project Management. Nick Houston assisted us with Project Management in obtaining this. And what this has done, well, let me tell you from the beginning. I simply get with, because I think it's my job as mayor to try to get some new revenue to do some of the things and to provide services that we need in the city. So, in getting with Mr. Houston, who replaced Christie, had not, from public management, we also identified, and we had come before council, four or five engineering firms, including our current city attorney, and the council selected LJA Engineering. Where that worked out well was, we included LJA Engineering in the scope of applying for the grant, and what that did was, it really helped, we believe, to facilitate, to facilitate receiving that $350,000 grant. The next step was, because even though I know a lot more about water and sewer than I'd like to, especially the sewer part, the, I put our most senior public works guy, Darrell Glover, who literally knows if anybody, most of the pipes that run throughout the city and where our problems have been, even before I came on, almost two years ago, I put him with the engineering firm and told them, "You all get together and let, you know, take a look and see what will be the best use of this $350,000 if we get it," because we didn't have a chat. We were applying. So, they, in Glover's work history of where our repairs are, where our problems are, the work the city's done in his, I don't know, 20-something years in being with the city, something like that, they selected our most problematic area, which happened to be the old clay pipes in our oldest neighborhood of Alta Vista. Now, how does this impact the rest of the city? What I'd like to do at this point is to bring up our two gentlemen from U.S. Water Utility to share with you kind of how that whole sewer system works in a way better than I could, and why this is going to have an impact on the entire city, with the city pays all the problems that can happen or have been happening that will also be alleviated with this. Yes, ma'am?
During this session, I'm just curious, is who's going to be able to ask questions about the money in the bank account?
Sure. It's a Q and A with the mayor at this point, since we don't have official meetings, sure. Will be, you know, somewhat informal. If something pops into your head, it's probably okay to raise your hand, and at whatever point, we can take a break and address that question while it's fresh on your mind.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Now, tell the folks who you are for the ones who may not know you.
Yes, sir. This is Byron Ewing, operator out here for USW Utility Group. My name's Corey Bostick. I'm the regional manager for USW Utility Group, Houston Gulf Coast. So, we've been out here operating for the City of Prairie View for right at about a year now.
And what's the scope of your area as regional manager? I think that's...
I oversee everything from Harris County all the way down to Galveston County, pretty much. So, we right now currently have 13 contracts here in the Houston area, but we employ, we've employed over 350 certified operators. Our corporate office is located in Florida. We have a Houston corporate office. We're also in Oklahoma, and we're also in Iowa. So, we're pretty spread out in the states.
Okay.
So, what you're looking at, I know this is very small, but this is the only city map that we have currently right now. We've requested more from the city's engineer, and we're waiting to get those, or else I would have put it up on the nice projector screen. But what I did is, I highlighted the area of Alta Vista. Okay? Alta Vista is all eight-inch clay pipe, like Mayor said, a very old system right here. Alta Vista directly, gravity feeds into Anderson, what's formerly known as Dooley Road Lift Station. Okay? Dooley is the main lift station that feeds to the wastewater treatment facility that's up here at the Prairie University.
To, Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
I know, man, you know what you're saying when you mean "main." Share with them how the whole city sewer system winds up at that main one that you're talking about.
Correct.
And let me, before you go any further, can you explain quickly what a lift station is? Like, we use the term all the time.
Yes. Yes.
But, and y'all assume that we know what it is.
Okay. So, what a lift station is, is basically a wet well that's drilled in newer spots throughout the city. It's the collection point for all the raw sewage. Okay? And there you have lift pumps, depending on the size of lift pump, or depending on the capacity of the wet well, is the size of lift pumps that pump that raw sewage into a force main, and then either to the next lift station or directly to wastewater treatment facility. So, a city that's as spread out as Prairie View, you all have multiple lift stations here. Y'all have eight lift stations. So, and that leads to where I'm going right now, is Dooley is your main lift station. But you have, this is Ruby Road Lift Station down here. You've got Old Houston Lift Station, Greenfield. You have Richards Road, which we call Brookside. And then you've got Richard Road Lift Station, which we call Lift Station Number Five. And then we also have Men's Road, which is Men's Road, it's right here in between the factory and Old Houston's Lift Station. So, you have Men's Road Lift Station there. So, all of these lift stations, well, all this area, gravity feeds to each of these lift stations, okay? And these lift stations have a force main that pumps all the way over to Dooley Road's Lift Station. So, Dooley takes on all the flow from the city, which is a tremendous amount of flow. And when you have issues like what we have going on in Alta Vista, where we have a lot of INI, root infiltration, we have sink holes in that area, that creates strain on Dooley Road Lift Station from doing its job. Because what's happening is, you're getting debris in the bottom of that lift station, sand, it's allowing a lot of rainwater going to that lift station, which you're paying for to have the wastewater treatment facility processed. You know, it's not, it's not longer processing your raw influence, it's processing rainwater because all these pipes are damaged and need to be fixed. So, Dooley Road Lift Station right now takes on all that flow, and that flow goes from Dooley to the wastewater treatment facility.
Let me add something, because I know I sat in the audience for several years listening to this stuff, and I had no idea. A lift station is because the university is the highest point in Waller County. So, all of our sewage, if you will, has to be lifted because it's going against gravity. That's why we have to have a lift station. It's literally lifting or helping to push it up because it can't flow with gravity because it's going uphill, ultimately to the university. So, that's what creates a problem. And because it's going against gravity, it also works a lot harder. So, those are some of the issues and concerns. Yes, ma'am?
What is the distance that it's going to the, from Dooley to the university? What's that distance?
Oh, it's a little over a mile, yes, from Dooley to the wastewater treatment.
To the actual plant. It hits right at the west entrance to the university, and then it's like on university property, so to speak, but it has to continue to get to the actual plant in the center of the campus. And when Mr. Bostick mentioned INI, I didn't know what that meant either, inflow and infiltration. What that means is, some of you have seen holes in the ground, and I'll give you a good example, because it happened to me. Long before I thought about becoming mayor, I cut my grass one day, and I remember David Kilpatrick, Kirk Patrick Senior, I mean Junior, had hurt his back. So, I went, he had him and his wife were away at work, they lived across the street from me on Pine, and I went over and just, let me cut his grass to help my neighbor out, right? And there was a hole in the front yard, right by the sidewalk, to the right of the tree in front of their house, to the front right. And of course, I just cut around it. It's a hole. Didn't mean anything to me. I, it never dawned on me what creates this hole. Well, shortly after I became mayor, and I realized the kind of bills that we were paying to independent contractors to come in and fix every single one of these broken pipe and holes, I started asking questions, and then we ultimately brought it to council and told them, "We need a lift station," because now we have a machine operator in Mr. Melendez, which the city didn't have before, so it was having to outsource, because we didn't have anyone who could use the machinery that was needed. Well, once Mr. Melendez came on board, and I got with him, because he was doing it for Severn Trent for 20 years, even when they were running the sewer operation, water operation for the city. He was working for Severn Trent, doing the work in the city. So, it was kind of perfect, because he already knew the city and some of our problems. But when we got the backhoe, and I made the people give us a trial run, because it was a used one, we didn't have it in the budget, but I looked at these $4,000, $6,000, and $8,000 a pop bills that were going to people in Prairie View and in Waller, professional plumbers. And one of the first ones we found was a hole in the middle of Pine Street, almost across from where Dr. Johnson and Miss, what's the lady's name? Miss Good.
Good.
Miss Good lives. And it was a long one, and every time they went to separate the pipe so that they could fix it, it kept cracking. It kept cracking. So, we got together, and never been in a hole that deep intentionally myself, but we got in and we were able to get it going. But then we found another one, almost directly in front of the Johnson's house, and then I said, "Well, wait a minute, guys. Y'all need to take a look at this hole I found when I was cutting his grass." It was an extension of the same clay pipe, three bad holes within 100, 125 feet of each other. And Mr. Glover informed me that they had fixed some further down toward Reverend Fletcher Williams' house not that long before. That's just on that one street with them Owen, and every time it breaks, it's somewhere around $2,000 to $4,000, depending. So, now, we're able to fix these things literally, if not the same day, the next day, because we're doing it in-house, they're already on payroll, we already have the equipment. And so far, in the 14, 15 months that Mr. Silver's been with us, we've saved just over $200,000. Because I have them doing a work order, they already know him and Mr. Glover, but based on the footage of the pipe they need, how much plumbers generally charge for that. So, we paid for the $38,000 for the backhoe. It allowed us to hire Mr. Villanueva, who is also a water repair person who's with another company, and between him and Silver, they get down them holes, and Silver digs it up, and Mr. Glover, and they do their thing. But that's money that was going out, that is your tax dollars, because the residents who pay for all these things, that's where the money comes from to run the city. But any, any other questions you all have on this particular piece?
The Dooley Street Lift Station is the main one?
Yes, ma'am. Literally, all of the city sewage winds up at Dooley Street. Well, very, yeah, extremely close. You're the closest house. Yes.
With the alarm, I don't know if the alarm's still going off, but at one time, when that pump would stop working, the alarm would go off, and it would blast until Mr. Glover or somebody could come and turn the thing on again, and the stench was unbearable.
Yes, ma'am.
The big trucks came out to blow the thing, the men down the trenches, so far down, we could see the top of their hard hats, but it came back.
Well, Miss Boyer, yours, yours is an interesting scenario, because you've been dealing, I can say that now, couldn't say it when I was campaigning, but you've been dealing with that situation for how many years?
About 64. The last rain, the house was built in 1964.
What?
And we haven't, uh, the last rain, two weeks ago, the real hard rain.
Yes, ma'am.
There is one toilet in my house you cannot use when it rains hard, and the others just cough and kind of boil over. So, yes, I've been dealing with this a long, long time.
No, no, wait a minute. Hold on. You're saying, because I know they did some work a couple of years ago in your front yard, and had that big pipe sticking up that they, you know, readjusted and everything, but you're saying it's still happening?
One of mine, yes. It's still, soon as it rains, it just comes up to the top. I just go and look at it, because I know what's happening, right now.
Now, go ahead.
Okay. After the meeting, I'd like to get your address, so that way, the next time we have a hard rain event, I'm going to send someone out here, and we're going to actually investigate and see what's causing that issue.
I'm probably home by that.
Yes, ma'am. I don't mind doing that either. I don't mind doing that. And we definitely want to get down to the bottom of it, see what's going on, so that we can fix the problem. We were unaware of that. One of the things that we are looking at doing is Dooley Lift Station, well, number one, we're coming back up a little bit. That alarm, you should no longer hear that anymore. We installed what's called a verbatim. It's an auto dialer. And so, we have floats that are set at certain levels in the lift station. So, once the water gets to that level and rocks over what's called a high-level float, it triggers that verbatim to call us out. So, that way, we have enough time to get out there and react and fix the situation, instead of being in a situation to where, you know, we can't fix it, and we have to wait on backer trucks to get out there and pump it down, something similar to what you just explained. So, we do have a verbatim in there that calls us out, that way we can get out there in a timely manner.
Now, would you share with them, because I found that interesting early on, after you guys came on board and sort of did an assessment of our facilities, what was the state of those auto dollars? Don't laugh, bud. What was the state of those auto dollars? Because these are the folks who've been dealing with this stuff, and I just want them to know where we were and where we are now, so that they could understand and appreciate the work you've done.
Absolutely. When we first took over, we had our whole Houston office out here in Prairie View doing what's called facility assessment. We went around all the facilities and took notes of, you know, what needed to be taken care of, and the priority that it needed to be taken care of in. We brought those notes back to the mayor, discussed it with the mayor in terms of urgency, and the mayor said, "Well, we need to get it fixed." So, we began working on getting the facilities back up to par. Pretty much all the veratums, except for the one at the water plant, the one on Cameron and the water plant here behind the council, the building here, all the veratums were not working. So, that was our first challenge.
The verbatim is that auto dialer?
The auto dialer. The auto dialer, that's correct.
He talks like that.
Right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just kind of slow down sometimes. So, we tapped it all, of all the auto dollars, we got those fixed, and then there was other issues that we had to address, such as Greenfield and Old Houston, Richard Road, Brookside Lift Station, which is by the Washateria. Those lift stations, they were the wrong applications for what the city was experiencing as far as when the city gets rain events, the growth of the facility. So, the capacities weren't correct, the pump horsepower's weren't correct, the pump curves weren't correct. So, we had to go in and do a lot of analysis and get those lift stations backed up to par. And so, they are all now fixed at 100%, okay?
Now, let me help, you help them, the, and we'll do one at a time, there were a couple of things. The lift station by the Chevron on Richard Road and Business 290?
Yes.
What did you all inform me was the status of it pump-wise?
Basically, that lift station, I'm surprised that the city was getting by. That lift station had one five-horse grinder flight pump with a two-inch discharge pipe.
Now, is that the one that was missing a pump?
Yes, it was missing a pump. You don't, okay. TCEQ, which is Texas Commission Environmental Quality, says you have to have redundancy at all your facilities. So, that means, okay, if you have a ground storage tank, you need to have two booster pumps. You just can't have one, because if one goes out, you have to have another one that can service the community. You can't ever be down. So, this particular lift station only had one lift pump. It was undersized, it was only a five-horse grinder flight pump, and it had a two-inch discharge. So, there was no way it was keeping up with the flow coming from, what are the?
The Washateria.
And the apartments, the duplexes, the college duplexes there.
Brookside.
Brookside, right. So, and there was no way it was keeping up the flow. This lift station was constantly running, 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 running. And that itself was costing the city in electricity. You have to pay those bills, those electric bills. That was costing the city in replacement of the pumps. Every time it would rag up or just burn up, we'd have to come out and derag it and pull it, and have to put in a rental pump. So, all these fees just piling on top of each other, on top of each other, is costing the city money. So, the best thing to do is get in there, do an analysis, and fix it, fix it correct the first time. And that's what we came in to do for the city.
And what did we, what did we find at Greenfield and Old Houston lift stations?
Yes.
Pump-wise?
So, Greenfield and Old Houston, they had what's called Gorman Rump Stormwater Pumps. So, that also was the wrong application for these two lift stations. So, we had to go into those lift stations and replace those pumps as well. What a, a Gorman Rump pump sits on top of your station and has a suction line that goes down into the wet well. So, that suction line can lose prime at any time. So, that's not a good application for a lift station. You want to have a submersible pump in a lift station, and that's what's called a wet application. That pump sits down into the water, and it's always covered with the, with the influence, the sewage, and so you don't ever have to worry about losing prime. That pump will always come on unless it's ragged up or it's shorted to ground and has to be pulled, but nine times out of 10, your submersible pumps are your best application for a wet well scenario. Yes, sir?
Ragged up means what?
And yes, I'm glad you asked that question, because a lot of cities are uninformed on what and what not to put in your garbage disposal, or what and what not to flush in your toilet. What we consider a rag, the commercials say, "Hey, we have these new disposable wipes." You know, buy these new disposable wipes. I hate to, I mean, I'm just going to be honest with you. They're not, they don't, they're not biodegradable, they're not environmentally safe, they don't decompose the way that they say they do. So, when you flush those, they start accumulating. Something else, and, you know, I'm trying to be as politically correct as I care with this, but, you know, tampons, maxi pads, those things, condoms, that's what we're finding an accumulation of at each of these lift stations. And when those things tumble together in the collection system, they start winding up, and they become what's literally a big rag. It just looks like a big mop rag. And those are what, that's what gets caught up in the pump. The pump can only pass through so many solids, and it's not designed to pass through a large accumulation of rags. It's going to get hung up in the impeller, and then it's, we're going to get the call for high-level wet well, we have to bring a crane truck out there, pull the lift pump out, break down the base of it, and pull the large clump of rags in there that shouldn't have ever been in there in the first place. Grease is something else that's really bad for the lift stations. Pouring grease down the garbage disposal, you know, when you're done with grease, you know, sit it on, out in the backyard, let it, let it harden up and scrape it out, put it in the trash can. Because when we pour grease, even if you dump a bunch of dishwashing soap behind it, it does not break it down. Once it hits that cold water in the collection system, it forms right back up, and it's like jelly. And then, once it gets to the lift station, it's hard brick. It looks literally like a brick. And so, we have to constantly come out and backer out the lift stations, because we get an accumulation of grease that literally, big chunks of just grease bricks in the wet well.
Let me give you an example, because we were on the phone, what, this past Friday?
Yes.
And we had a manhole bubbling up sewage situation, Rosewood on Azalea Street. And I went out there, called Mr. Glover. He was out of town, but, you know, looked, turned around and was headed back in, and I stayed out there with the residents, because these things run, what, $10,000 a day in fines with TCEQ if they're not corrected, which is some stuff. And then on Saturday, got another call in Pine Island, and when Mr. Glover went out there, we, we did pull up and we picked up a small vacuum, what's the word for it?
Which one?
The, the vacuum thing, when, when the line is clogged.
I, I think so.
Yeah, so.
Oh, that's your truck?
Yeah, yes, we had a small one, and it didn't work. So, we had to call in the back truck, I think the one when we were out in Greenfield, what, midnight that night? That runs what, when those guys come out? Couple thousand dollars easy?
Right. It depends, anywhere from $2,000 to up to $10,000.
Yeah. And, and they found a huge, what you call rag or bag, you know, just white collection of stuff, there was a ball that had tied up the line. It didn't even make it to the lift station. It tied up the sewer line. So, we had to have someone come in and clear that up, so it would continue to work. And because all of our lines ultimately are connected all the way up to the Dooley or Alta Vista Lift Station before it hits the campus, everything that goes around affects other things.
Yes, ma'am. My question would be, so if at one point we had to call outside sources, how much do you guys charge to come and call lift stations now?
Well, it depends on the scenario. You know, if we're dealing, now, right now, all the lift stations are up to 100%. So, we're not having to come out as often as we had to in the beginning during the construction phases and trying to get new pumps in and waiting on new pumps to come in and repiping. So, we were having, we were experiencing issues every time it rained. So, we would have to have backer trucks come out and actually backer the sewage, because the pumps couldn't keep up, and there was sewage flowing onto the ground, and we couldn't have what's called unauthorized discharge. So, in those instances, they ranged anywhere from probably $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 every time a backer truck had to come out, you know? It really just depends on the scenario.
Let's catch you with a quick scenario. Let's say where Greenfield is, whenever they have to do a washdown over there, whenever they have to...
Tell them what a washdown is.
Washdown is anytime we have any kind of unauthorized discharge come out of a manhole or wet well, anytime it hits the ground, we have to report that to the state. Anytime anything that comes up, if they have to unclog a large line of grease, you're paying because it's the man hours and how many people have to be there, because it is a super-powerful truck. They have to have at least three people. So, you're paying for them to use the line and to suck up everything and do a complete washdown, because you have to have a washdown, it's required by the state. So, as I said, it just depends on the application.
And the washdown that we had to do at Greenfield that night, it went from Greenfield over to that other street, because that little creek carried some, so y'all had to go all the way over and...
Because of where that creek is located, and they had farm animals right there, we had to be sure that we took care of everything from the furthest end, always from the point of where it came out.
Just a couple of questions. Are there 17 manholes in this area here that you outlined here?
Open them up if that we can. I believe so. Let me just do a quick count. Two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. I'm counting. I'm counting sixteen.
Okay.
Uh, but that doesn't mean that this drawing is, uh, correct.
That's fair.
Could be a manhole that's not actually on the.
The other question is, um, you said that the lift stations are now, uh, as they should be. So with the rehabilitation then, which I always understand to mean to repair something.
Yes.
So if they're as they should be, are you upgrading them or are you actually rehabilitating them?
If you've done a rehabilitation on the actual lift stations around the city, this one would actually be considered an upgrade to add that one extra pump in there.
Right. Uh, Richard Road, Brookside was an upgrade. Greenfield and Old Houston were an upgrade.
And is this four thousand two hundred and seventy linear feet going to actually complete this project? And is the money that's allocated sufficient to complete this project? I know you may not know the answer to that last question.
You know, it, it may be, um, it may be a little shy of that, uh, depending on the contractor. This is naturally gonna go out for bid. Uh, we, we most likely aren't gonna do the work. Uh, it's gonna be subcontracted out. Um, so it, it depends on, uh, the proposals that the city gets in, uh, to do this contract work. Uh, but I can tell you, um, you know, being in the business, uh, this long, a job like this, uh, most common repair is gonna be slip lining. Uh, they do have what's called pipe bursting and they have what's called point repair. But with the condition of this pipe and it being a clay pipe, I mean, it's obsolete. You can't even buy a clay pipe anymore. So they're most likely gonna slip line, uh, the, the piping, uh, which is putting in like polyurethane pipe that seals itself once it's in, in place.
The flex pipe?
Yes.
Oh, okay, there was one other thing.
Mm-hmm. And, and to further answer that question though, it actually is gonna cost like four hundred and two-five. The city's match is like about fifty-two-five. So it's a little bit more than the three fifty and then plus our match. So the total project is supposed to be somewhere around four, a little over four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, Mayor, um, what then is the plan for the other, uh, Pine Island and Whitechapel and all the other communities?
Well, it's, sure, good question. It's actually the same as it is for this one in a sense. Like before, this was a problem and we went after some money and said, okay, that's the worst situation. Um, two days ago, had a meeting, um, with, uh, uh, project management. Uh, the guy that's assisting us with this and already talking to him about another grant, uh, the C D V G grants.
Plan at this point?
Uh, actually, no, because until we get the funding, um, the best laid plans don't matter without the money. What we do have next that is already in place and we're finalizing and about to go out to the bid on that as well. Is the million dollar James Muse Parkway Grant to go from Business Two Ninety all the way to Owens Road and over to the new school. And what that's gonna do, that's gonna loop the resident's water. And what that will do is allow, we already have a superior water rating in the city. The city already had that before I came in. But the engineer tells me looping is going to help the flow and better quality water.